I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairments for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abolish? Motion carries. Announcements, next school board meeting is July fifteenth, right here at six o'clock. And we'll move right into the athletics and activities. Jeff, chair the success.
Thank you so much for having me here today, Emily, thanks for the reminder. We have a school board meeting tonight. It's hard to believe that it was a year ago that I was here talking about our two recipients for the Athena and the Yost Hadorf Leopold Award. The year went extremely fast, faster than I can believe, actually. This spring, we've had quite a finish here to the end of the school year. Our boys tennis team finished third in the state in Class A. Carter Ryanbold and Charlie Paul took second in doubles, first time in school history. We had eight students who earned all-state awards in track this past weekend. Jack Markstrom set a state record in the four hundred, forty-seven point two eight seconds. It was absolutely amazing. Looked like he still had a little bit in the tank, too. Did not look tired. Our four-by-two-hundred relay team, which included Jack Markstrom, Owen McQ, Brennan Sexton, and Charlie Dick, state champions in the four-by-two, and they set a school record. Our track team this year set nine school records, so we'll be replacing a lot of hardware on that board, which is absolutely awesome. They're having an incredible year. Our boys volleyball team, which is still a club team, is playing in the state tournament on Wednesday and, I believe, Thursday. And Luke Sonnaborg is competing at state golf. So we're still going. It's been just a great year, and it's been an exciting finish to the school year. Like to have Jack Nelson come on up. Jack is our Yost Hadorf Leopold Award recipient for 2024, and Jack's had just an incredible high school career. We started recognizing our top male athlete here at Mount West Tonka High School in nineteen fifty-three. Jack participated in football, wrestling, baseball, GPA of three point six one. Lettered in football, five times in wrestling, three-time state champion, five-year state participant, four times all-conference, two-time all-state academic, two-time captain. Might have said this, but five-year letter winner. Baseball, five-year participant, three-time letter winner, captain. I just heard that he earned all-conference yesterday at their end of the season banquet. Jack's gonna wrestle this fall, and he's gonna go to classes at the University of Minnesota, Twin Cities. Mom and Dad, Dan and Lisa, are here with us tonight, and I say thanks for your efforts over Jack's and Carter's high school careers. It's been fun to work with you guys. I'll miss ya. In eighth grade, Jack qualified for state and again state champion in ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, and came up just a point short here this senior year. Great story between Jack and Gary Erdman that was ran earlier this year. Both three-time state champions here at Mount West Tonka High School, the only two student athletes to achieve that. Let's see, just an incredible high school career. It's been fun to watch Jack as he's grown and matured, but also just a true leader in our school, whether it's on the mat or on the grass or in the classroom. Jack's just done an incredible, incredible job. We're gonna miss him, and we wish him the best of luck. I'm gonna put him on the spot. I told him and Natalie out in the hallway, I said, hey, I'm gonna have you share maybe your favorite memory or something that you're gonna miss, or just something about your high school career. So congratulations, Jack.
Something that I'm gonna miss about being in high school and high school sports is probably just the team atmosphere and competing with all my friends and getting to play alongside of them my whole high school career.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, Natalie. So Natalie is our 2024 Athena, Yost Hadorf Leopold recipient, and we started to recognize our top female athlete here at Mount West Tonka High School in nineteen seventy-three with the inception of Title IX. And Natalie just had an unbelievable high school career. Natalie participated in hockey and soccer and in track, and participated in the state tournament in 2021, academic all-state, 2023, true team state, track participant. Mom and Dad, Jim and Stephanie, obviously, just like Dan and Lisa, did a great job here. We get at least one more year with the minors, but it's been fun to work with you guys, too, and I appreciate all your efforts and support. Natalie, five-time letter winner in soccer, two-time captain, two-time team MVP, two times all-conference. Somehow she earned a letter in cross-country as well. That's also a fall sport, so way back win, and was all-conference honorable mention. I'm sure Mr. Humbert wanted her to continue to run cross-country. Five-time letter winner in hockey, two-time captain, Hobie Baker Award recipient. Again, participated in state in 2021, was our most valuable defensive player. Four-time track and field letter winner, captain, true team participant, academic all-state in hockey and soccer, academic all-conference in hockey, soccer, and track, and national merit finalist. I don't see that I had your GPA on here, but I know it's good. I know it's good. I don't see that I wrote that down. We have the pleasure of, it's one of my favorite days of the year, Gary's been there, Kevin's been there before, Ralph's probably been there, but the Athena banquet is truly an amazing event where this year they recognized over fifty female athletes that have just done incredible things. As I sit there and I listen to the things that they've done and what I'm gonna read about Natalie, I wonder what I did in high school. It's truly an amazing event. The food's good, venue's good, it's a lot of fun. But this is what Nancy Manderfield read at that luncheon about Natalie. No grass will grow under Natalie's feet if she's a five-sport athlete from Mount West Tonka. Five years in soccer and hockey, twice captain, and then soccer, twice MVP. She has four years on the track and field team, once as captain, and as if that were not enough, she sneaked in one year of cross-country. She has the greatest number of goals and assists in soccer for the White Hawks. In hockey, she won the Hobie Baker Award and was voted the most valuable defensive player. Track and field, she helped our team do a conference championship. Natalie has proven leadership skills as president of the student body and communications officer in the student senate, junior officer for the National Honor Society, vice president of DECA, two-time state champion, international finalist, and six-time international qualifier, and president of, like a girl, a woman's empowerment project. I don't know, Natalie, if you can get better than that. When Nancy read that at the banquet, I thought, oh, no, Natalie's gonna think she's gotta do better than that. But in here, she had a smiley face in her writing. She's academic all-conference and all-state in the National Honor Society and national merit finalist, and has an academic excellence award. In 2023, she was Mount West Tonka's recipient of the MSHSL Excel Award, designated for juniors who demonstrate excellence in community, education, and leadership. And Natalie will be attending Duke University this fall, majoring in math and economics. Congratulations, Natalie.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for that. I'd say my favorite part, like Jack said, has been being part of the team atmosphere. And then I've also learned so much about being a leader that I've been able to apply in so many different things and parts of my life, and I know I'll be able to take that with me in the future. Thank you.
And I just end by saying this, that even though these two just had some amazing accomplishments, we had a whole nother group of kids that were recognized and nominated for both on the male and female side, and it makes things really difficult for our committee when we choose those kinds of things. So it's just great. Natalie and Jack, I thank you for your leadership and your efforts, and I wish you the best of luck moving forward.
Are there any members of the public who wish to come before the board tonight to speak?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, you guys. If not, then we'll move on to the student rep report.
All right. So our student senate just ended the year, and we just hosted elections in May, and we have thirty-six new members and nine members per grade, so we elected eight, and then one honorary member per grade, and then we'll have eighth-grade elections in the fall. The National Honor Society also had their induction on Wednesday, May first, and we had a total of fifty-six students inducted and fifty-four returning members inducted at the ceremony. And then they have several community service events planned for the summer. Moving on to arts, the MWHS Theater earned Spotlight's Award from the Hadda Theater Trust for their butlers performance in April. They had five spotlight honors, nine individual honors, and five evaluator shout-outs. And then the Westonka Community Theaters also begun their work on the summer production of Cinderella. They had additions in April, and they are starting rehearsal now. And then MWHS Arts, students competed in the MSHSL Visual Arts Festival, and out of eighteen entries, students earned eleven superior awards and five awards of excellence. And you can view the artwork in the pack. And then Mr. Peterson covered a lot of the athletics, but we had a great end of the season. We had thirteen track and field athletes make it to state. We had a lot of records broken this season and two first-place finishes. And first-place finishes were the first time in school history, which was very, for the boys team in track and field. I mean, Luke Sonnaborg qualifying for state eve, and the Westonka Boys Tennis Team also competing at state. So thank you.
Before we run off, we wanna, as a school board administration, say thank you, and this is for you.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck with your future.
Oh, thank you.
At your Duke, that'll be your time.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask that, did Stella get president?
Yes, she's co-president with somebody, so you'll see her.
Fantastic. Miners, you can just keep on coming.
Thank you, guys.
We'll move on to the treasuries report.
All right, well, it's gonna be hard calling no Dax, but we will be there. We'll begin with April, cash donations, modern heating, Westonka Recognition Event, five hundred dollars, Lockwood, Westonka Recognition Event, five hundred dollars, Honor Care Foundation, Shirley Hills, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, American Heart Association, Shirley Hills, seven hundred dollars, Progressive Insurance Company, Shirley Hills, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, Charities Aid Foundation, MWHS, eight, seven dollars and thirty-two cents, Anonymous, Community Ed, sponsored student, twenty-five dollars, Rotary Club of MW, Mount Westonka Community Education, twenty-five hundred dollars, Mohawk JC's, Mohawk JC Scholarship, four thousand dollars, John Stevenson Jr., Jeff Stevenson Scholarship, one thousand dollars, Butch Humbert, Larry XL Basketball Scholarship, one hundred dollars, Delaney Charitable, Sue Riley Memorial Scholarship, two thousand dollars, Anonymous Captains Club, one hundred and four dollars and thirty-two cents, David Lindquist, Dave Ice Memorial, two hundred dollars, North Westonka Lions, First Robotics, three thousand dollars, Bjorn and Natalie Carlson, First Robotics, one thousand dollars, Friends of Mount Westonka High School, First Robotics, two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-one cents, Back Channel Brewing, First Robotics, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, Anonymous, First Robotics, three hundred and ten dollars, Cynthia and Michael Tsypus, First Robotics, nine hundred and five dollars, Richard and Sandra Koser, First Robotics, one hundred dollars, Mount American Legion, First Robotics, five hundred dollars, and Rotary Club of Mount Westonka, First Robotics, one thousand dollars. Westonka Softball Boosters, Westonka Softball Team, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. We now go to May contributions. Egan, Westonka Recognition Event, one thousand dollars, Tracy Gunderson, Shirley Hills, three hundred dollars, Box Tops for Education, Shirley Hills, seventy-one dollars and forty cents, Shirley Hills PTO, Shirley Hills, seven thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, GMS PTO, GMS, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents, Anonymous, MWHS, thirty-four dollars and fifty cents, Charities Aid Foundation, MWHS, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents, Ohio File Prints, Inc., Westonka Athletics, eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents, MWHS Golf Boosters, MWHS Girls Golf Team, one thousand dollars, LPO Financial, Mary Esther Coral Scholarship, one thousand dollars, Butch Humbert, Larry XL Basketball Scholarship, one hundred dollars, Mountain Farmers Market, Mountain Farmers Market Scholarship, one thousand dollars, and finally, University of St. Thomas, First Robotics, five hundred dollars. To date, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents have been contributed, and I have booked at the check ledgers and checks for May and April and also the year.
Thank you, Ralph. Do we have any school board committee reports? If not, we'll go move on to teaching and learning. Mark?
All right, good to see everybody again tonight, and I thought tonight, I mean, I gave a little bit of time and just recap, a lot of the work that's been done this school year, and a lot of great things have been happening. Before I get into that, you know, the teamwork, the culture in the staff, our administrators allows for everything I'm gonna share today. It truly has been a labor of love this year, a lot of challenges, but we also learned how to work together through those things. Yes, you've heard me talk this year, all year long, has been the focus on the READ Act, and a lot of great things, a lot of challenges with that, and the big focus has been on the professional development. And we have figured out our schedule, we have figured out the training. The training has launched for our elementary staff, it's launched with our K-12 special education staff, intervention teachers across our buildings, and it started back in our May workshop day, it goes through the summer. The training will go all the way through the entire 2425 school year. And what's most important is that we figure out ways of doing this training in ways that we build in collaboration, and we build in ways that for the teachers, they feel successful, and they feel like they can put that into their day. It's not easy, but in the end, we want this effort to impact our students. So we are on our way with that piece. You've also heard me talk a lot about MTSS, multi-tier systems of support. We finished our third year of this process, and again, that is all the intervention supports we think about in academics, behavior, social-emotional health. And the goals for this year was to really help building teams get clear with what their role was, what their expectations were, to really work with all staff about what we meant by tier one core instruction interventions inside the classroom. So back on October eighteenth, we had a workshop day training on those aspects. And then we continued our partnership with CARRY, and Laura Potter and Dan Kaniewicz have been great partners for us. And what we did this year with CARRY, with Dan and Laura, where buildings had specific needs around MTSS, we built in time for them to work specifically with building teams. And that's been effective. So you start, you know, your first couple of years with the overall picture, the big theory, let's get through what this all is. This year was a shift into very specific topics and needs in the building, and we'll continue that partnership next year in each particular instance. And then, of course, this has been forever and ever in the teaching learning department, curriculum review cycle, and that is always a critical aspect of the work we do. That is our mechanism, we look at our curriculum, look at the needs of our students, it's a seven-year cycle. This year was a big focus on embedding new academic standards from the Department of that, and then we're gonna go into, actually, the bottom, well, I'll get to the last slide, but we'll have new academic areas that we'll focus on next, and I'll get to that at the last slide. The other big piece this year, you've heard me talk about high school redesign, a lot of you have been involved with different committees, and just getting exciting about the work that we're doing. So my aspect, my piece has been developing programming and working with Jolene with that, and of course, it's the Woods Program Division, machining, Certified Dressing Assistance Program, and then the MRI and EMR and EMT programs. And just to fast-forward here, we've been developing partnerships with different organizations, and I just brought some pictures tonight, and you'll see Jolene over the right-hand photo. This is probably our second or third visit to Sprinling Park, and that is the gold standard for Certified Dressing Assistance Program and EMR and EMT program, and they'll continue to be a great partner with us just to help us figure out, we're gonna make the Westonka version of these programs. And then we also made visits over to Dunwoody, and over in the upper left-hand corner picture, that's EJ Daigle, he's a dean over at Dunwoody. He has been a great support to show us the actual equipment that we are thinking about and figuring out how to bring into our high school. So and John Trosz from Minnesota Precision Manufacturing Association, he's been another player in this. These are individuals that understand what you need to build quality machining programming, and so we're right in the middle figuring out those details. And then moving on to this piece here, some of you were at one of our Friday T-N-L meetings, I invited Katie Rutledge to that meeting. She's our mentorship coordinator, but I wanted to bring her in because she has stepped up that game where a traditional mentorship program, where you have a mentor, you have a mentee, she's dove into academic coaching this year. So she takes it to the next step. So whether you're a first-year teacher or a teacher that just wants more intense feedback, she'll come to your classroom, she'll observe, take notes, and have a consultation with you of here are your strengths, here are things to work on, all in the spirit of support. And not everybody has those kind of gifts, but Katie does, and that is something that she's been doing at Gramby for a couple of years, we expanded to the high school, and she'll continue that work in the 2425 school year also. Another program that you maybe have heard me talk about is the Dreamcatcher Program, and the Dreamcatcher Project is through the Department of that, and it did start with the Department of working with American Indian populations. But what this program is, it's not only for American Indian students, but it's to work with special education departments when we are in a referral process, to think about cultural backgrounds as part of the considerations for special ed needs. And we're just getting going, looking at this piece, and this will be something, we'll be doing some training only at the elementary level, we'll be doing some oversight review with all our elementary staff in August. But it's a program, you'll hear a little bit more from me as we get into 2425 school year, but again, it just brings another layer of looking at students, their needs, their backgrounds, to make the best educational decisions that we can for them. So there'll be more to come on the Dreamcatcher Project this coming year. And I just wanna end with, you've heard me talk about DECA, First Robotics. Now, we know there are many, many success stories with athletics and with different activities. These are two that I've been most closest to because they're almost like an extension of our business department and our industrial tech engineering department, but DECA, again, just amazing year, sending forty students to the international competition, coming back with first-place wins, the eighth-grade wins, and tenth-place finishes with the program. And then just all of these Mount Westonka High School students that were there, representing our high school. It was truly a proud moment and a job well done. And then, as you know, this year was the Cinderella team with robotics, and it started out in Duluth, they won the regional, that earned them a trip to the first world championship in Houston, Texas, and again, the Tonka Bots really did an amazing job, that second bullet at the one hundred and forty-fifth out of two thousand, almost twenty-eight hundred U.S. teams, just amazing work. And then they finish out their season on May fifth with the Minnesota High School League competition, and they took it all, they took first place in that competition. Again, there's the trophy, but I think that picture, Mr. Kimball with Toby Fleener, who was our ace driver, I think it says it all. It says it all. Job well done. And again, they are already busy, they're planning for this coming year, they're looking at offering again the second-year middle school robotics camp run by the students, and just the really great things that are coming. Well, thank you for the support of them. Okay, looking ahead for 2425, just a very high summer. We always continue looking at student achievement. We'll have a more intentional focus on growth with our standardized test scores, we'll be entering year four implementation of the MTSS framework, and then, as I was mentioning, number three, continued work around our high school redesign programming. There, we're gonna get into course development, we're gonna finalize all the blueprints, the equipment we need for these different programs, that we're gonna be ready for the 2627 school year. And then continued work around the READ Act, professional development work, and then, as I was mentioning earlier, curriculum review cycle this year, coming up 2425, we'll be focused on math, social studies, health, and industrial technology. So a lot of great success this year. We'll continue the work next year, and certainly appreciate your support and all this, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great school year.
What do you, free time?
Yeah. Hold on, free time. Let's talk later about that.
My goodness, you do so much, it's incredible. My hands are bleeding.
Mark, I have a question about the coaching and the mentoring program. Is that unique to Westonka? Is it more widespread? Is it required by the state?
Yeah, it's fairly common in big school systems. You have big faculties where you just need more support than a principal or an AP, but so here, a little bit smaller, so not as typical. You'll take, like a Wayzata, they probably have a whole team of academic coaches, maybe half dozen of them, that's all we do. But they also have a lot of district schools called Q-Cup, and so that's a And so that's a program through the Department of Ed, and that's another night to talk about Q-CO.
Was that ever in use at West Tonka?
No, it wasn't. Wasn't. So our science district, I would say the work that Katie does is right-sized for us. And then we have Natalie Bulo, our literacy coach at the elementary level, and she does something similar, supporting teachers. But it's not required, but it is something that we find of high value. We need the right person in that position to be there, and Katie said.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Board. Tonight, I'm here to present the adopted budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But before we dive into that, I'd like to share with you just a brief snapshot of... It's tough to get older. There we go.
That definitely helps.
Okay, there we go. All right, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Anyway, I want to share with you the revenue and expenditure statistics through the end of May. We have received thirty-one million, two-hundred-and-four-thousand, or eighty-one point one percent of our revised budget. And again, our revised budget is the yellow column in the middle. The adopted is in green. And then the presentation following this slide will be the blue column, which is our next year budget. Expenses through the end of May show that we have spent thirty-two million, eighty-one thousand dollars, or eighty-two point four percent of, again, the yellow revised budget. It appears that both receipts and expenditures are at the appropriate level as we enter into this last month of the fiscal year. Okay, so again, I'll be covering the highlights, just the high points of our proposed budget for next year. The Board Finance Committee met on May thirtieth, a couple Thursdays ago, to discuss the budget in greater detail. And at this time, I'd really like to thank Ryan Carlson, Ralph Harrison, Pastor Lauren Davis, and also Superintendent Borg for their time, dedication, and commitment to the Finance Committee this school year. We cover a lot in about nine or ten meetings a year. As I go through the presentation tonight, if you have any questions, feel free to stop and ask. Otherwise, we'll have a time at the end. Okay, as always, the cornerstone of our free budget is the district enrollment. Not all, but almost all funding sources are tied to how many students we serve. This chart, this chart gives a five-year review of our enrollment trends and also what we're estimating for next school year. Our school district has been very blessed with stable enrollment outside of the COVID hiccup, and we look forward to that trend continuing. A few weeks ago, we graduated almost two hundred students, and we are planning on a hundred and seventy kindergarteners next year. So we are expecting just a slight decrease at this time. Again, I, Kevin and I both always pride ourselves on being cautious and conservative with our projections until we are at the revised budget, when we have more actual data. One thing I need to note, in our enrollment projection model, this slight decrease that we've had, we're anticipating that this will be the end. And then in future years, we have graduated some of our larger classes, and then we will be experiencing enrollment growth beyond this point. School districts statewide need to adopt in a budget by July first of each year to open our budget to be able to, to cut checks, make payroll. It's difficult because there's a lot of unknowns. Our staffing isn't complete. We don't know how many students will be here this fall. And so what we do to create this budget is to come up with assumptions. And this slide gives a nice, high overview recap of the budget assumptions we're working off of. Again, next school year, we're planning on, at this point, two thousand three hundred and eighty-six students or two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight weighted students. Again, this is a slight decrease over the prior year because of that larger graduating class and our anticipated kindergarten class of one-seventy. Highlights on the revenue assumptions. We are planning, and we know that we'll be receiving a two percent increase in the general ed funding for next school year. Two years ago, the legislative session gave us four percent. Last year, again, next school year for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it'll be two percent. For each weighted student, it will be moving to seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars per student. Other state categorical aids, we're planning on two percent. The capital projects levy is an area that is not tied to students. That's tied to property values. We've had nice growth in that area. So in this next year's budget, we are planning on just over a half million dollars of additional revenue in that category. And the other item that's very noteworthy is next school year will be our first year of Step Two. If you remember, we had a two-step levy, and so we've been being funded off of the Step One. And then Step Two is an additional three hundred and fifty dollars per student. And again, that will be implemented next year, the Step Two, with inflation. Legislatively, they've been supporting special education costs to be much better this year, next year, and then the following year. They're trying to reduce that deficit by forty-four percent, so that's built into the budget. After that point, they're going to be funding at fifty percent. We have a small amount of compensatory revenue, additional compensatory revenue coming in, which is based off of our free reduced counts. We received estimates for our federal title programs, and that is showing about a hundred percent, a hundred thousand dollars less than the prior year. We do get actual counts in the spring, and we're hoping that that will be better. But at this plan, at this point, we're planning on about a hundred thousand less of Title One, Two, and Four revenue. And lastly, on the revenue highlights, is our OPEP. We have an actuarial study, and that support comes in in terms of revenue to help with our retiree benefits in both implicit and explicit OPEP funding. Expenditures, the largest part of our budget is obviously salary and benefits. We are a people-based operation. Many of those contracts are settled there. This budget was built on what the Board has approved or similar estimates. We always include additions, contingency for lane changes, staff develop, excuse me, and staff additions that might arise as needed by students. Personnel benefits, we receive, we have, we're planning on a three percent increase in health and dental. We are very pleased with that. The trend tends to be more like eight, ten plus. And so we're really happy with our self-insured, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but we're, we included three percent in the budget. And then the other non-salary, non-benefit costs, we applied a three percent increase. All right, this slide gives a recap of the revenue that we receive for general fund, and it tells the source of, in a simple terms, of where it comes from. If we put them into buckets, we have four main categories of revenue. We have state aid, we have property taxes, we have local revenue, which would be like ballgame receipts, interest, donations, and then lastly, federal revenue. On the left-hand side, it indicates the year we're in and what our revised budget is built around. On the right-hand side is next year's budget and where those dollars come from. So you could, you can see that the state definitely is the biggest player. We received almost two-thirds of our revenue from the state of Minnesota. Property taxes usually run around thirty percent in state and local. Now that our federal COVID funding is closed out, those are equate for, to about just a little over six percent. Everything is fairly similar to the prior two years. You can see there's just about two percent higher property taxes, and that is due to the Step Two of the levy. Yep? Okay, expenditures. This slide gives just a quick look at our general fund adopted, or expenditures by program. Percentage-wise, this was almost identical to the prior year. This percentage, when I do this chart, it always makes me very pleased. I feel like West Tonka does a fantastic job of spending the majority of the district dollars directly in the classroom, benefiting students in areas such as regular instruction, special education, instructional, and pupil support, and vocational instruction. This graph shows the anticipated fund balance on the far right-hand side for next school, or at the end of next school year, as well as the prior year history of our unassigned and assigned fund balance. The twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget plans on a fund balance gain of just slightly over two hundred, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-four thousand. As you can see, over the past several years, our fund balance has hovered between twelve and fifteen-plus percent. The adopted budget is planning on a ending fund balance of five-point-five million dollars, or thirteen-point-seven percent of our total general fund expenditures. This continues to stay within our, our fund balance goal of eight to eighteen percent. It's right at that midpoint. We monitor this very closely with our financial planning model, our Board Finance Committee, and, and again, study it very closely. Fiscal responsibility, long-term planning, and forecasting is a top priority in our department. Okay, in addition to general fund, the district manages seven other smaller funds. Obviously, general fund is our, our largest fund balance. The, the next fund that I'll highlight, and all the funds are laid out the same, the estimated fund balance for June thirtieth, twenty-four is where it's planning on being this year. The revenues and expenditures are highlighted, whether there's a surplus or a use of fund balance. And the bottom line indicates where we will, feel like we'll land at the end of next school year. So again, Student Activity Fund has a budget of just under six hundred thousand. Those monies account for co-curricular and extracurricular student activities, such as Woolridge, Student Senate, DECA, athletic and extracurricular. And they, they do a lot of fundraising and a lot of great events for the students that they manage themselves. And again, it's, they're planning on just, just a slight surplus.
Kathy, Kelly, is that where, like, the money, I know we get advertising, like, on the sign at the football field and in the gyms and stuff, does that go into that fund?
Yes, it does.
That goes into that fund for uniforms and stuff?
So you're saying the advertising on the fields goes into student activities?
Yes, they do. It goes into the captain's club.
Yeah, I was just curious, and that seemed like a really good place for it.
Okay, the next fund is Fund Two, Food Service. They are forecasting an increase in the fund balance. The West Tonkys have, West Tonka foodies have done a great job, and they're enjoying this school year of serving all students breakfast and lunch at no charge through the recent legislation for the National Food and Nutrition Department. Even though their fund balance is growing, you can kind of plan on this being brought down. They have equipment needs, as well as they will be funding a lot of the construction within the food service departments with their fund, fund balance. That's going to be very helpful to have that support from the food service department.
Is that free, free lunch and breakfast? Is that national this year, or is that state now?
Each state is different, but it's free for Minnesota, so.
Yeah, but it's through the state now. It was through the national during COVID, right?
Right. So we submit our free and reduced counts at the end of each month, and students still complete a free and reduced application. The federal government actually still pays, but whatever the federal government doesn't pay, then the state picks up the tab.
So Kathy, you said to anticipate a decrease in that fund balance because of increased capital costs, basically? But yet we're still showing an increase predicted for twenty-five.
Right. And when we do our revised budget this winter, Ralph, depending on the pacing of the, the building construction project, I believe that's scheduled for next year. I receive a draw schedule, and Kevin will be able to shed more light on that. But they will be helping, again, with the food service project, some of their equipment. And I believe that's forthcoming into next school year with the high school.
But it's just a timing issue.
It's a timing issue, right. But once we know exactly if it falls, and it gets a little bit tricky because a lot of stuff in our world happens in the summer. And July is this year, and, or excuse me, June is this year, and July and August is the next year. So again, like I mentioned, don't be surprised if you see that being drawn, you know, drawn down by some capital projects, whether it be construction or equipment. All right, another highlight is community education. Our community education fund balance at the beginning, or we're planning on at the end of this year, being about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And again, they're just continuing to, to grow that, to restore their financial footing following COVID. Again, community education, this is, houses our adventure club, youth after-school enrichment, summer enrichment, adult programming, the West Tonka Activity Center, the WAC, early childhood programs, adult basic ed, early childhood family ed, and preschool screening, to just name a few. Again, our community education has done an amazing job of, of solid rebuilding following the pandemic, and it's their goal to, to offer exceptional programming to our community from birth to senior citizens. I have a couple of smaller funds on this page. Debt service is the first. This is where we track our bond payments. So again, it's much like our mortgage payment for your house, it's, it's our principal and interest payments. And we, we refinanced our twenty-twelve bonds. This also takes into considerations our payments for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the building bonds from twenty-sixteen, again, the WAC and the PAC building, our abatement bonds. And the biggest change is, in this budget, is our first bond payments for the twenty-twenty-four project that's, that's underway right now, so it's very exciting. On the far right-hand side is our trust fund. Our trust fund tracks all the activity for scholarships, receipts, and payments. This spring, Mount West Tonka High School awarded seventy-five scholarships worth over three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars to our students. You can see that this budget is around eighty-five thousand, so it's only about a quarter of the scholarships that the students receive. Some of the recipients give them directly to this, the student, and, and these are only the scholarships that we are the fiscal agent for, and some come right from a different foundation. So again, we have a fabulous amount of gifts for our students. Okay, and then the last two funds are Internal Service and OPEP Trust. Internal Service is our self-insured dental and health insurance. Our projections are showing another steady year of growth. We are, again, increasing the revenue by three percent, both for health and medical and dental insurance. And this fund has done really well. It's, was a wonderful financial strategy for the school district to contain the health insurance rates in dental that are, just gives us more control. Our Employee Benefit Committee, as well as our advisor, we monitor these statistics monthly to see how, again, we're pacing, just like we do for the board meetings. And again, we're really happy with having the fund balance to weather any storms of unusual claims. And the last fund is the OPEP Trust Fund, again, another real blessing for the district. This fund tracks the post-employment benefit activity of our retirees for implicit rates. And these, you can see that the revenue is eighty thousand. That is nothing more than, than interest earnings. These bonds were paid off, so we're not levying for them anymore. They were paid off in twenty-nineteen. And according to our actuarial study, we have the payments that go out. We have, again, a fund balance we're planning on is still over three million dollars to support those expenses in the coming years. This is a little bit difficult to read, but this, this concludes the review of the adopted budget. This slide gives a one, one-page view of all funds in our entire adopted budget. Later on in the agenda tonight, you'll have an action item listed to approve the budget. And again, keep in mind that this is... And again, keep in mind that this is our adopted budget. We'll be back in February of twenty-twenty-five, when we have a better indication of the new legislation, how that's going to impact our budget, when our staffing is final, and when we know how many students will be attending our district next school year. At this time, I welcome any questions, comments, or superintendent board, if you'd like to add any items.
Mr., anybody have any questions for Kathy before we?
Your projected budget and the actual, are we projecting a certain, are we estimating percentages above that or?
Um, for general fund?
Yeah.
At the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yes, we, we do, as I mentioned, we do put contingencies in there. A lot will, a lot of light will be shed this fall because so much of our budget is based on students, but our, our general fund budget now is forty million dollars. And so Kevin and I often talk about, you know, if there's a one percent variance, that's four hundred thousand. And so again, we, we really pride ourselves on being conservative and very thoughtful when we put the budget together. And so when we have the audit and we have final data for this year, we do hope to come back again if, if all the stars align for next year.
But our past practice, say, the last five years, has pretty much been on par with what is necessary for yet.
Yeah, good question. What, what they measure us against really isn't so much the adopted budget, but when they have the audit, they measure against the revised budget. And I'm pretty proud to say we've been pretty, pretty dialed in, very close within percents on the revised. They don't, again, they don't really dial in so much on the adopted budget because of the, it's based on assumptions, or looser assumptions, I should say.
You guys have done, just, just so everybody knows, our finance department's done excellent job of managing the finances. You're not going to find too many institutions, the kind of budget level that we have that's going to come this close. Weren't you like almost dollar for dollar the last time?
There's a few years I feel like I've been closer here than I've been at home. Need to do a better job here at home at night, I guess.
Those home budgets can be more flexible.
I know.
I would just echo, and I, we obviously, as a board, there's just a lot of shared appreciation of the, the effort and the projections. Obviously, with all budgets, there's variables, and I think your experience, your team's hard efforts, the guidance of the finance committee has really worked well over these years of keeping a good rudder for our decision-making, and it's something, as Kathy said, we do really take serious because you're, there's other opportunities, but they come at cost. And so you try to, we always try to evaluate our budgets to make sure that we might have to reprioritize our budgets to allow new things, ending older things, more effective, less effective, constantly being fluid with that. But in the end, there's a projection of a dollar, and we have to, we got to live within that. And I think you give us a good compass on how to make that decision-making, and you have a track record, that's excellence. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, again, thank you again to the finance committee, and like Kevin said, I have, I, I don't do this alone. I have a, just a fantastic team, so I'm, I'm really blessed and enjoy coming to work every day, so.
Thank you. And then, what does superintendent's report, Kevin? We, you know, sometimes you start in June and you don't know what to scale back. I was listening to Mark, and I was trying to think of some of the things we're talking about. It seems like it's been our own for a long time, but the last board meeting, maybe that's new news, and I think back to graduation, and it seems like I've talked a lot about graduation at this point, and really, it was pretty recent. And we just had the most beautiful day to have an outdoor graduation. It was, it was San Diego weather, it was seventy-two, it was a very light wind, it was warm, but not overly warm, and it was, it was done very well, very thoughtfully. Our kids were just tremendous, and it's such an accomplished class. And so all of that coming together for one hour, it's just one of the best hours you can spend of seeing the efforts of these kids walk across the stage and hear their stories. And the greater piece is, you know a lot of their stories as they're walking, whether it's announced or unannounced, and they saw a lot of success, they saw failures, they had to overcome things, they were elevated, and just knowing the efforts that they put in, that their parents put in, that certain staff or coaches put in, I just really thank this board for the stability that you give this community in running the school system because it's, it's a lot of excellent stories. We have, we had a really great close to the school year. It was, it was exciting to see that come, and it's exciting to see what's ahead. And when we talk about what's coming up ahead in July, we have a branding review that, we started this review because we knew we were going to make some large physical changes with the high school redesign. We also knew that we had inconsistencies with our brand. We had to get our arms around that at the time. You could make the case that it was needed before, but now it's really time with some of these physical improvements, and so we're going to be bringing that to the board at the July board meeting, and then it's really making sure that we have the measures to try to keep consistency with that when it would go forward. We have plans on our finances, and Kathy talks a lot about enrollment, and there's a lot of ways to make sure you have stable to slightly increasing enrollment, and a lot of that is just having a quality education and having stability in your district and people seeing hope of continuous progress. But there's also communication efforts, and there's efforts that we can do to reach out to our community in better ways, and so those are some of the efforts we're taking on. Mark highlighted some of the academic efforts, and one of the efforts that we're also taking and putting upon ourselves is looking at how we go about innovation in our school system. And so we really feel like we're in a position now where we have just a strong financial foundation. Our facilities needs are starting to be addressed. We see that we have, we don't take it lightly, but we have great community support of our staff, of our district, and it's really to look at what should we prioritize in ascending. And so when we talk about innovation, it's not coming up with an idea, it's really identifying a need that our kids have, and how can we do an excellent job at that. I have so much confidence in our team right now, and I look at our administrative team, I would say, I didn't exactly do this math, but I would bet eighty-five percent of the team right now has been here ten or more years. It's just incredible stability of people that, you're not talking about a career now, I said to them, you get approaching thirty years, you're not talking about a career, you're talking about a life. And I, I almost can get emotional about it because it's just, it's part of your family, but it's, it's the fabric, and we don't take that for granted again. We feel very privileged that we can work in a wonderful place like this. So we, I just want to share with the board from graduation to some of these, these efforts right now, it's a special time to work in West Tonka, and I'm very thankful for your leadership. When we look at the action items today, Kathy obviously took time with the adopted budget. That's the primary item on here. There's the e-Learning Day Plan, which really goes almost entirely unchanged from last year. I think the great news about the e-Learning Plan last year is we didn't use it, and we hope that's a plan that can stay on the shelf because, truthfully, the best plan is having kids in school, not having shortened days. I'm sure there's a lot of kids that are rooting for at least one snow day, but that's where e-Learning comes in, is if you have inclement weather and you can't have a day, oh, you can do that differently. And our plan, again, has it that the first day is a snow day, and we don't make that up, and then the next days go into e-Learning. The question is asked, what if you actually, what if it's the opposite, and you have a horrible year, and you go beyond that? Then we're talking about adding days to the calendar. But those of you that have worked with me, after we start getting a few snow days, we start doing that regardless if we can do it in advance. And so I start looking at certain. We get five.
Five, one snow day and then five.
Yeah. But before we got, get to that point, I, if we, if we end up getting snow days or poor, cold days that start coming in before February, we start making adjustments that we don't think impact families as much, which is usually that main workshop date. But if you ran into a situation where it was late in the year, you might have to add days to the calendar. It's never happened in my time, and now that I've said it out loud, I suppose. The next action item is with the West Tonka foodies, with their staffing. Laura's done an excellent job of staffing to the needs of our services, and what we've noticed is that we've been able to broaden since, it, she did not replace staff during COVID. When they left, she kept it at a lower staff level because they're able to meet that need. And still, as they continue to offer new things and bring things back that kids are showing that they appreciate, it requires some staff, and so this is a part of that effort. Our contract with IEA, it replaces, we've been with the Musser Environmental for, I think about as long as I've been here, for this need. They are ending their service to districts like ours, and so they're still keeping a certain part of the state geographically, but they've dropped a lot because one of their, Steve actually has moved to Colorado, or Wyoming, I think it is. And so we're looking for someone else to take this, and IEA's already done some of our services because Steve Musser's didn't do them all, and this seems to be a really good fit for our school district. And so when you ask about environmental health, safety, it's things like testing water, it could be air quality, it could be checking how we service first aid kids, or the list goes on with health and safety. The next action item is on the staff development revenue waiver, and you see, we do this annually. I'm a strong proponent of a percentage should dictate your budget, the need should, and I feel blessed that our, our union, along with our leadership, would say, let's make a plan so that it fits our needs versus saying, well, we have two percent, we have to spend two percent. It could be above, it could be below, but the need should drive what the percentage is, not what, that you hit a percentage. And so as long as I'm in this role, I would recommend that if we can have the flexibility, we drive it by need versus a statement of a percentage. Not much gets determined by census when it comes funding because a lot of it is by student, or maybe it's, maybe it's certain things on the taxes of a community, but some things with community ed would. And so this is just updating our recent census so that their funding stays consistent with it. It's a slight increase. I think this new census brings probably additional three thousand dollars into community ed, so it's, it's more of a, which I say, a, a maintenance of an update that you should have the current number put in versus that there's dramatic changes. Really excited about G, bringing in a chief engineer position. We have done this differently, but as I mentioned earlier, we've ended our contract by mutual decision with Dasher. They've been here for eighteen years. You'll see in the contract or in the board agenda today that you're going to approve James Collins as our new facilities director. James comes with a great background in a number of industries, and I think he brings the skills that administratively that can really benefit our district. We look at, in our Dasher contract, we also had a maintenance, a chief maintenance position in that we decided, we were having trouble filling it under our Dasher contract, so we did a service agreement, but we, we believe bringing this back in district holds a lot of value of just making sure that we can maintain. We've been introduced to some people that have strict credentials, one in particular that we feel it could be really a, a great asset to our community, and so.
Would that person be under the facilities?
Would be. In this position would oversee our facility engineers, and so. We have two items. We've had our property casualty work rooms comp renewal just came in over the weekend, and so we're asking you to update those. That was competitively bid. We took the best bid that was presented to us. One thing that's really changed is they've asked for a lot more information from school districts as they've seen probably different claims losses, and so they wanted a lot of information about roofs and boilers and years. There's also requirements with cybersecurity to make sure that that's being maintained that they've been asking, but that would be one change I've noticed.
Was that percentage increase pre-standard for?
And talking to, and talking to Kathy, they would present that they've seen as high as thirty percent in some districts. I think it probably depends about workman's comp claims of what you've experienced in your communities, but yes, it would be, it would be more, probably on the better end of what at least our broker would be noticing. That's hard to say on a fifteen percent, though.
You're seeing that, I mean, you're seeing that in homes and everything else.
Lastly, our, our VOIP telephone system, voice-over system. This, our contract now comes, it concludes, and so that's served us well. This is an estimate that became a lot more competitive, but it was, we bid that out through Lachler, and this will meet our needs. It's our telephone system, and so it gives our telephone capability, and then it has a five-year service agreement with it. And so we're pleased with the results of that, and that's in your agenda as well. I think just concluding of this, really, really busy between, we have different bargaining groups that we're negotiating with. Today, we did some training with safety practices in the district with our team of how we stay coordinated in time of emergencies. Obviously, the facilities planning is something that is very, very exciting, and we will be beginning the tennis courts and the primary projects. We're just waiting on some permits, and then once we have those, we're set, set to begin. And then with, with designing of the high school in Grandview, the last things to be designed would be the stadium and the two primaries with their maintenance projects. So excited about that work continuing to go, but I would expect here, it'll probably be July that we have a lot of these projects, projects starting.
Thank you, Kevin. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Hopefully, my voice holds out for this discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item eight A, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item eight B, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five e-Learning Day Plan for West Tonka Public Schools. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item eight C, approval of adding labor to the West Tonka Foodies kitchens. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item eight D, approval of a contract with IEA Inc. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item eight E, approval of staff development revenue waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item A D, approval of resolution certifying the population estimate, estimate for the twenty-two, twenty-four payable, twenty-two, twenty-five levy of Independent School District two seventy-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of action item eight E, approval of adding a one-point-oh FTE, chief engineer position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of late action item eight H, approval of the property and casualty and workers' compensation renewal. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Chair moves for approval of late action item eight, eight I, approval of replacing the district VOIP phone system. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Anybody else have any other topics at this time? Hard to believe we're halfway through June already, you guys, the summer. Hard to believe we're halfway through June already, you guys, the sun is going to blow by. If there are no other topics, I call for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Enjoy your June. We'll see everybody in July.
Thank you.